All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock tonight. Doesn't look like we have anybody absent besides Chairman Kaufman. So we can move on to item two, citizens communication. The Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comment on items relevant to the planning and zoning, not already scheduled on tonight's agenda. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published agenda will only be heard by the commission. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the commission. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes and will be asked to state his or her name and address for the public record. So is there anyone present wishing to address the commission? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll move on to item three, which is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion. The items include preliminary and final plats where staff has found compliance with all minimum subdivision regulations. All items approved by consent are approved with any and all staff recommendations. There will not be separate discussion of these items, and if any commissioner desires to discuss an item on the consent agenda, it will be moved to the regular agenda for further consideration. So are there any items that the commission wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
No.
No, okay. Then we'll proceed. Item three A on the consent agenda, 2024-1150 is approving a preliminary plan for Pecan Crossing. Preliminary plan, 104.43 acres of land, more or less in the William Caldwell survey, number 66, abstract number 162 in Flugerville, Texas, PP 2024-000168. Item three B, 2024-1160 is approving a preliminary plan for Village at Wells Branch Revision One, a 6.31 acre tract of land out of the Alexander Walters survey, section 6.7, abstract number 791 in Flugerville, Texas, PP 2024-000341. And three C, which is 2024-1162, approve the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes for August 5th, 2024, the regular meeting. So I'll request a motion in a second.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Move on to item number four, which is discussion only. So the commission welcomes comment on the following items. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes and will be asked to state his or her name and address for the public record. I think we have a presentation from Kristen. Which is item four A. Oh, Jeremy, okay.
Good evening, commission. So this is an item, a discussion item. So basically, it's just an opportunity to be able to present some information to you. You guys get to hear about it, and then we can talk about it and provide your feedback, whether it's tonight or it comes through email. Your input is very valuable. So what we're talking about is the Mobility Master Plan. Mobility Master Plan is a combination of the Transportation Master Plan that we worked on 2019, 2020-ish, and then we're taking the Trails Master Plan, and that was last updated roughly 2014 time period. Touched on it with the Parks Master Plan, but we're taking both of those and combining them into one plan, so we're calling that the Mobility Plan. And the intent of combining it is to really talk about how does Flugerville get around town? How do you move around? Whether that's biking or walking, using those trail systems, or whether you're getting into your own personal vehicle, maybe you're taking a different kind of vehicle around. How do you move through town and how do you do that effectively and efficiently and safely? So that's what the impetus is for this master plan. It dovetails with our comprehensive master plan that talks about wanting to do the 10-minute neighborhoods and so wanting to make sure that we have our road networks. Looking at our eastern growth is something that's really important for us to be doing right now so that we plan accordingly and we get ahead of that growth. And we do that through these master plan efforts. So tonight, we have contracted with Kimley Horn Associates to provide their consulting and take the lead on this Mobility Master Plan effort. Tonight, Kelly Reese is with us to be able to go through a presentation to basically show you where we've been this year, where we're at at this point. You can see what the updated master plan for the roadways as well as the trails. You have larger copies of those, so you can see those. And again, if you want to look over them later tonight or later this week, or you think of items, just reach out and let us know. So we appreciate your time. We appreciate your feedback. You represent our community, and so your voice is very important. With that, though, I will turn it over to Kelly, and she can go through kind of our efforts, where we're at today and where we're planning to go. Just kind of forward that way.
All right, like Jeremy mentioned, my name is Kelly Reese. I'm a transportation engineer with Kimley Horn, and we've been working on the Mobility Master Plan with the city of Flugerville. Want to go over what we're doing today first is what is the MMP? Talk about some of the public input that we've had so far. And then the kind of three big elements of the plan are the Trails Plan, the roadway plan, and the cross-sections for the roadway. And so we're going to go over each of those and then talk about next steps that we still have in the project. First up, an overview and sort of what we're doing. Like Jeremy mentioned, in sort of the 2019-2020 timeframe, we published the Flugerville Forward Transportation Master Plan. This is a long-range transportation plan that went over some of the policies and solutions needed to get to a CIP so that we could fund future infrastructure for Flugerville for the roadway as Flugerville expanded. Because it was so focused on the CIP and so focused on the roadway, it really mostly looked at on-street vehicles and looked at the roadway plan itself, not as much active mobility-type plans. In 2020, Flugerville published the Aspire 2040 Comprehensive Plan. This was more of a visioning document. What do we want Flugerville to look like? It covers a lot of things from economic development to kind of workplace development, but it also touched on transportation topics like 10-minute cities and how to have active walkable communities. Building on the Aspire 2040 Plan, the 2023 Parks and Rec Open Space and Master Plan helped, like Jeremy mentioned, flesh out the Trails Plan. A lot of this touched on active mobility, how you can walk around, bike around. So as of today, what we have published is three distinct kind of plans. One of them really touches on the roadway, one of them really touches on the vision, and one of them touches on trails. And so what we're trying to do with the Mobility Master Plan is have all of our transportation documentation in one place and touch on all of those things. To kind of summarize that, previously, each of them had limited factors. The Transportation Master Plan really looked at roads. The Trails were in a completely separate plan. What we're looking to do is prioritize all of them, put them all in one place, have the Trails with the rest of the roadway plan, just have one comprehensive document. Like any good plan, we came up with a set of vision and goals. I'll go into this in a little bit. We do have an advisory committee that is made up of Flugerville residents that's helped advise this plan, and they did help come up with the vision as well. The vision that we settled on for this project is the Mobility Master Plan strives to create a sustainable network for multiple transportation options that enhance safety, connectivity, and resiliency for the Flugerville community and visitors. Building on that vision, we also have six goals. The goals are to establish safety as the foundation for every project, including a focus on reducing fatalities and injuries for all transportation users; to deliver an effective travel network that relieves congestion, supports economic development, and prioritizes funding through a capital improvement program; offer diverse travel options by implementing new roadway connections and alternative modes like walking, biking, and low-speed vehicles; create a well-connected transportation network that links to neighborhoods to community destinations, including parks, schools, employment, and retail centers; develop a communication system that enhances awareness and education about transportation projects, their timelines, and their functions; and foster regional partnerships that can advance the transportation network within and beyond the city. These goals do tie in with the strategic plan goals that the city of Flugerville currently has. A lot of these are very similar, including safety, economic development, infrastructure, and services. From there, we have gotten a lot of engagement from the public so far. We have two recurring groups. One of them is made up of staff, a lot of them here today. Jeremy, Robin, Michael, Shane, Jeff, Katie, and Evan have been really involved throughout this entire process. We also have an advisory committee of 11 citizens of Flugerville that were chosen by council to represent the project and provide input, and their names are shown here on the screen. We also have a website that's been promoting the project. It's been pushed through city social media. It's gone out in several blasts. There's been sidewalk stickers with QR codes to it. It's had nearly 4,500 views to the website. There's an online map where people can leave specific comments about roadways that they want to see, or trails, or whatever type of infrastructure improvement to the transportation network they want to see, and it's had over 700 comments. There's also been over 350 surveys completed on the website, as well as multiple more paper surveys that we gave out at events popped up around town like Deutscher Fest. From there, getting into what actually has we've come up with so far in the MMP. First up, I want to talk about the roadway plan. In 2019, in the TMP, we called it the Thoroughfare Plan. Today, we're calling it the roadway plan. You can see that here on the screen. There's types of arterials, types of collectors, and some urban sections. You can see out on the east side, most of it is proposed. There's also a lot of what we're calling minor collectors on the east side. Talking about the differences between arterials, collectors, and local roads, you can sort of see there's a graph of the amount of mobility and the amount of speed that you can get on a roadway versus the amount of access you can get on a roadway, and generally, it's a decreasing line. Arterials are high mobility, generally high speed, generally more lanes, but less access, fewer driveways. This map shows honestly right where we are right now. It's kind of Flugerville Parkway and 685. On this map, those two roads would be our arterials. Collectors are sort of in the middle of the amount of access you have versus the amount of mobility that you have. These would be things like Finneg going east to west, railroad going north to south. And then your local roads are essentially everything else. And so we looked at these classifications as we move forward with the plan. What you have here and what you have a large version of printed out is what we're proposing as the current roadway plan. You can see the arterials are red and pop out. The major and minor collectors are shown in orange and blue, and then we still have the urban section. We have two new classifications in the Mobility Plan versus the Transportation Plan. One of them is LSV, which is for low-speed vehicles. These are connections that we think make sense in the community, but for whatever reason, whether they're in a floodplain or other constraints, they don't make sense to build that as a full-scale roadway, but we could build it as a smaller section and get people in low-speed vehicles like golf carts, like bikes, through without having to invest as much in the pavement section that might not make sense for a road. We also have what we're calling critical connections. This saturation of the map is a little tough to tell, but these are the super-short purple connections. These are things that there's a couple hundred feet of road missing between a stubout and a connecting road, and so it's a really quick bang for your buck. If you make this connection, you have much more connectivity. And then shown with a thumbs up are things that we actually got public comment on, things that people are excited to see and have specifically main mention of. Going over what changed, it's a little bit color-coded based on our goals. Based on connectivity, we have a much fuller grid on the east side. I meant to mention the kind of yellow highlight behind some of the roads are things that we have specifically changed the geometry of the layout versus the TMP. Some of the classifications have changed, which isn't called out as easily, but the brand-new roads you can see on the east side all have kind of the yellow background behind them. And we also added nearly 200 miles of traveling. Pushed out toward ETJ. We have some facilities for low-speed vehicles. A lot of those are those LSV routes that I mentioned. There's more major collectors on the east side. I think this is one of the larger differences. I mentioned in the TMP, a lot of the collectors on the east side were minor. It doesn't move a lot of people, and so we've upgraded a lot of them to major collectors just to make sure that people can get around efficiently. Based on that, the major collector does have more right-of-way than the minor collector, and so we're showing more right-of-way would need to be acquired, most of it in the ETJ where new roads are being developed. We have those critical connections identified, and then we've moved... We used to have two arterial types, one for six-lane and one for four-lane, and rather than having a six-lane, we've made everything four-lane and focused on connecting the grid so that rather than having, for example, one six-lane road, you have two side-by-side four-lane roads. We really sum it up as creating options for your options. You have options for your route. On the route options on the top picture, this is the fairway at Blackhawk Neighborhood. It's over 100 homes have one entrance in and out. If something happens, everyone is stuck at that point. Versus downtown at the bottom, there's tons of options. If any road closes, if there's an accident, if anything happens, you have tons of other options out. Also want to have mode options. If you want to take your car, if you're going downtown, you have the option to do that. If you're just walking down the street to a neighborhood store, you can do that. And kind of the middle modes as well, the kind of golf cart-type mode, there's options for people who want to take that. And also options for your view. Do you want the top pictures from Pecan Street, the nice oak trees along the side? Second picture is from Dessau, because there's various ways that we can treat the side of the road, and want to make sure that we address all of those. Next up, we took a look at the Trails Plan. This is the Trails Plan as it's published today. Apologies for the very grainy legend. That's how it comes today. You'll also notice that the Trail Plan really cuts off after the edge of the city limits rather than going out into the ETJ, which is how the Trail Plan operates today. It's made up of three types of trails, spines, loops, and arms, which are very comparable to arterials, collectors, and locals. And the dashes are for proposed while the solid is for existing, which is also true to the roadway plan. Sort of going over those, your spines are really similar to arterials. These move a lot of people. This would be like your Gilliland Creek Trail-type trail. Your loop really connects spines together and provide access to kind of smaller mid-sized destinations, and so this would be things like the Heritage Loop Trail. And then your arms are things that essentially finish out the rest of the network, which are a lot of the on-street trails like on Black Locust. As a result, here's the Trail Plan that we're recommending for the MMP. It still has the same color scheme, the red for spines, blue for loops, and purple for arms. We've also added a new one. We had a lot of discussion about what gets to count as a trail. If it's a sidewalk along a road, is that a trail? We ended up coming up with it has to be at least 10-foot along the side of a road to count as a trail, and then we're also going to have two classification systems, one for trails within the road's right-of-way and one for trails completely outside of the road's right-of-way. So Gilliland Creek Trail, for example, would be out of right-of-way. Flugerville Parkway Trail would be in right-of-way. And so we decided for the existing trail system, for things that are out there today, we're not going to touch that classification, but for new trails, the orange is showing ones that are specifically along roads, while the other colors are showing ones that are off-roads. We've also identified some critical connections. They're hard to see in this view, but they're all along Pecan Street where you have a lot of walkability, you have a lot of sidewalks, you have a lot of mobility, except across Pecan, it's very tough to cross, and so trying to find ways to connect that web. Shown here in stars are places that we specifically made tie-ins to City of Austin, City of Round Rock, and City of Hutto's trail plans. Hutto just recently put out their trail plan, and so we adjusted this trail plan to make sure that it ties in. And then shown in the thumbs up are, again, things that the public specifically commented on and wanted to see. Like I said, we have considerations for off-street versus on-street. For off-street, a lot of them follow the creeks. You'll also notice an odd straight line, which is following a power easement that we're looking to help turn into a trail, and so we added 54 miles of these and then 138 miles of what we're calling on-street trails. So overall, what changed? Because so many of the trails are following the roadway pattern and because there's a fuller grid on the east side in the roadway, there's a fuller grid of trails on the east side now. Like I said, we're considering both in and out of right-of-way, and they have slightly different considerations, mostly about which types of vehicles are allowed on them. There's a lot of talk about what does a motorized vehicle get to do, like powered bike or a powered golf cart? And so we decided that, or the way we're leaning is that they would be allowed on the on-streets. Sorry, yes, the on-street trails, but not the off-street trails as much. Made sure that we tied in with neighborhood cities. We updated the inventory and the classifications. Some of the original classification wasn't quite as structured in spines operate like arterials and loops operate like collectors, et cetera, and so we changed some of the classification just to make it flow better. And we added those critical crossings across Pecan Street to help the connectivity in that area. Finally, we looked at cross-sections. What does the actual road section look like? And in all of these, we have the MMP on top and the TMP on bottom. For local roads, it's very similar. You have a two-lane driveway, and you have sidewalk right behind back of curb, and then you have a bit of buffer before the development starts. This one, we essentially left alone. For minor collectors, you'll notice you have two lanes of cars on the road in both scenarios, but in the TMP, bike lanes are on both sides on-street. In every cross-section in the MMP, we actually move bikes off-street, which serves two purposes. For one, it's safer. It's harder to pop a curb and hit someone than to drive over paint and hit someone. And for two, the paint actually is a high maintenance cost, and so by putting them behind the curb, we're saving on maintenance costs down the line by not having to re-stripe all the time. For the major collector, you can see in the current TMP, it has two through lanes and one center-turn lane, bikes on-street. In the MMP, we're looking again at taking bikes off-street. We're currently showing that as a paved-through center median, but it has the option to have the center-turn lane. We're looking for it to be flexible so that whatever the context of the specific road is makes sense. If it makes sense to pave it, you can pave it. If it makes sense to stripe it, it's the same width and it can be striped. The big difference here is that in the TMP, this cross-section was 70 feet of right-of-way, and in the MMP, we're looking at it being 80 feet of right-of-way. This would affect pretty much only new major collectors. Existing ones would not necessarily be widened out unless the city undertook a project to redevelop the whole street. But for new developments, it would be an additional 10 feet of right-of-way. For the urban section, originally, it looked nearly identical to the major collector. You have the two through lanes, the one center-turn lane, except you have the option for on-street bike or on-street parking. We still have two through lanes, option for off-street bike or on-street parking, but we got rid of the center-turn lane mostly to make a distinction between the roadway classifications and because in the urban section, you often don't need that much of a turn option. For the bikes versus parking, they take up the same amount of space, and so you can choose either or. You do have to choose at the beginning of the roadway. When you implement it, it goes one or the other, but you can see, you can do really any of these three situations. You can have bikes on both sides, you can have parking on both sides, or you can have one or the other. Again, depending on the context of the road, it's a flexible section that you can fit any of these three options in. Finally, the four-lane arterial, very similar to what we currently have, except it does account for bikes and they are off the road. You have two travel lanes. You have the paved center median. Again, this center median has flexible options. You can make it a pedestrian refuge island. You can create turn lanes out of it. You can do various things within this cross-section. It is staying the same width of roadway and the same amount of right-of-way. And then the big change I mentioned earlier, there's no more six-lane sections. Previously, there were, but we've opted, rather than putting all the lanes on one road, to help spread them out and crossing grid. Again, overview of what changed. The bike lanes in general got wider. In the TMP, there are mostly five feet, and the MMP, we're looking at mostly making them eight feet. This is both more comfortable for bikers and it allows low-speed vehicles like golf carts to potentially use them if people were interested. We're setting all trees back from the roadway, so none are directly behind or back of curb. Everywhere, we're showing 11-foot through lanes. In the TMP, it was very context-sensitive based on the cross-section. Sometimes it's 10-foot, sometimes 11, sometimes 12. We standardize everything just to 11 feet for the through lanes. I mentioned the major collector right-of-way did increase from 70 feet to 80 feet. The urban section no longer has a center-turn lane. All the bike facilities are behind curb. In the arterial, there's only one four-lane section. So what's next from here? Next week, we're meeting with TechStot to talk about roads that are shared jurisdiction, which is mostly 685, Pecan, 45, 130, and those types of roads, and figuring out how we can partner on those. Now have a date set for a coordination meeting with Travis County, which is next week, which is to talk mostly about the ETJ where we have shared responsibility. Have a workshop with city council in early January. And then I mentioned, we have the advisory committee where we've been talking with residents about all of these changes and stuff, where we've talked with y'all and get your feedback and council and their feedback in the other jurisdictions. We'll take a plan back to them to get their final buy-off. At that point, we're planning to present the final plan to y'all in February, in early February, and the final plan to council in late February. And all of this goes into the roadway impact fees that Flugerville currently has. They're supposed to be updated every five years. That five years comes next year, and so a lot of what we established in the MMP will help inform what goes on in the roadway impact fees. And so that's what we've got. Wanted to share that with you and get your feedback, either now or whenever it comes to you.
This looks great, and my comment has very little to do with what you just presented. Since you're meeting with TechStot.
Yes.
On Pecan Street, there are, there's a dedicated right-turn lane as you're going west at Swenson Farms. There is not one at Heatherwild. There is not one at Windermere, and there is not one at whatever, Grand Commerce, Central Commerce.
Central Commerce.
Most people use the right, whatever that...
Shoulder.
Shoulder, thank you, as a right-turn. It would just be really nice if it was consistently marked, and I have no idea if that's the city's responsibility or TechStot's, but it would, you know, I've almost gotten sideswiped because I try to follow the law. And anyway, just a comment.
Yeah, now we can take that to him.
Same in front of Hendrick High School at 1:30.
Okay.
Actually, it's probably, I think it's number seven on this slide, on your 358 surveys completed slide. So on that note, to add to that, thank you, this is amazing. A couple of things that occurred to me while you were speaking is that on the, what, LUVs, the low-speed or LSV, low-speed vehicles? So we don't, I'd love to have a reason to have a golf cart. You know? And we live in Falcon Point, so the drive to school would make a lot of sense. And there's Costco there and Willys, and then, you know, Pete's Harries and whatever's coming next. The challenge that I see, and I don't know if there's something that transportation can do in conjunction with planning and zoning, or parks, or everybody all at once, is that I truly believe that a limiting factor of using the trail is not the fact that it exists, but the fact that it's taking you to a place that you want to go. So like the idea, I live a quarter mile from Stone Hill. Under no circumstances would I walk there, period, full stop. And like, under absolutely less circumstances than zero, would I encourage my kids? And I certainly wouldn't take a golf cart. So I don't know how to, like, how to bridge that gap. And it's obviously it's crossing a freeway, so I recognize that that's kind of absurd, but when kids are out of school or like during lunch break, you know, you see kids walk. And so I don't know if there's a more holistic, for lack of a better word, approach to literally joining the two halves of the city in that case. Because also, because like I said, I think the reason that other slower vehicles or even bike use is not adopted as highly as possible is because, you know, okay, great, I have this thing now, well, I still need to go to a store or take my kids to the park or whatever. And so I don't know if there's a way to encourage development that integrates off-road trails and development in a meaningful way. And that's just kind of a thought. I haven't really put anything else together on that. I just don't have, you've been like, you know, I'd love a reason to have something without it being a risk.
Yeah, totally. We have looked a little bit at how do you complete the network, especially of that kind of active modes, and that's something we'll consider and continue to look at.
I have a couple of questions and comments. First of all, great job, and a lot of thought clearly went into this, and I think that you did a really good, a really good job of identifying low-hanging fruit and finding those wins, and kudos for that because it was really smart, really well done. So of course, elephant in the room is public transportation. Is it within the purview of this group to suggest to council that we go to voters and ask the voters, do you want to reconsider that this withdrawal from Cap Metro that we did like 20 years ago? Because we're a very different city now. And I know the voters, I believe the voters chose in '01 to pull out somewhere in there. So it seems like it's more than time for the voters to get a chance to weigh in again, but I don't know how that happens. But this seems like a good opportunity to talk about it.
Yeah. Jeremy, do you know the answer?
Jeremy, well, you're making your way up here.
Trains, trains. Andrew likes trains.
Read my mind, guys. So I've had some, there's been some softening on the cost of trains because I looked into it. Wow. I mean, it's an amazing, it's an amazing price point. There's multiple commas per foot. It's astonishing. But on the public transportation vein, and I've said this, I think here in this body for the last four years, you know, Flugerville's in a really unique position to do something interesting, right? And not necessarily interesting for the sake of interesting, you know, interesting for the sake of accomplishing something, but also making a place of Flugerville, which has been something that's been roundly discussed, especially in the last five or 10 years, is, you know, what publicly we've all discussed, Flugerville's slogan for many years, or I don't know if it still is, was between a rock and a weird place. And, you know, my comment to that was, well, we're using two other places to describe our place in the world, which I just don't think is what fits with our community. Like, we're unique and interesting, and we have lots to offer. So in the vein of public transportation, is there also an opportunity to not necessarily do trains, but maybe trolleys?
Ooh.
You know, and just to be interesting, some street cars that have wheels? Well, I guess they all do, don't they? That are, you know, drivable on the public roads, but like, things like that. Is that, is that something that y'all? That are, you know, drivable on the public roads, but like, things like that, is that, is that something that y'all?
So a low-speed vehicle could qualify potentially as things like that in the future.
Okay, because that wasn't on the survey when you guys sent it out. I filled out the survey, it was not on there.
Yeah, so I, I think what our survey was intended was, what are the things that you were looking for? What are things that preclude you from utilizing a transportation method? What, what is it that you were, you know, needing? And so we received that feedback.
I wrote comments.
Yeah, my kids can't cross the streets to get to the park and ride. Like, we live totally opposite part of town from Andrew. Like, I live on the west side, and I can walk and bike to things, but guess what? It's too hot to bike to anything in Texas, six months out of the year. Um, but my kid could have potentially gotten on the bus and gone to the Y and met me at the Y for swim lessons instead of me driving and then driving. But it's too dangerous for him to cross those roads.
Yeah.
Um.
So I'd like to add on to that. So before we moved to Falcon Point, I lived in Service Creek, which was about a mile and a half or two from the North Austin Tech Center, Tech Ridge, high-speed bus line. That was incredible, because we could go downtown, or, you know, we could take the high-speed bus line all the way to downtown, go to a show, go to a dinner. And then come back, and not having that accessibility, I mean, I, you know, I'm only four or five miles further, but it's not top of mind anymore. And so that's not the choice that we make. Um, but then adding on to accessibility and things, one, one of the things that's really fascinating about, uh, one-thirty, just in, in personal experience is, my kids do swim less, or, you know, swim team at, um, Gilliland. And at four, if I don't, if I don't pick them up at Murkison at four o'clock, I cannot get to Gilliland, so what's that distance? Uh, I mean, I can look it up and tell you, but it's not far. It takes forty-five minutes. It's astonishing, right? And like, I'm from Houston, where, you know, forty-five minutes, I have, I have expectations for what a forty-five-minute journey is, is like. Um, and so, and I know y'all are working really hard on that. I know a couple of years ago, we saw like the redesign of, uh, six-eight-five proposal. And I don't know if that was you guys or if that was a different, uh, group, the same thing. Um, so that's really fascinating, I'm looking forward to that. But how do, how, how to, how do you literally bridge one-thirty and also all the needs of, of everybody?
Yeah.
I don't know, that's just a philosophical question, but.
The Old Austin Huddle Road could probably do something there.
And so I would say that going back to kind of that mapping operation and, and looking at it. So if you think that there's another opportunity for, say, a bridge, you feel like, hey, that would be really awesome right there.
Okay.
You can definitely provide that feedback to us. That's what that mapping exercise was, it helps us to establish what this, this is. Knowing that one-thirty and forty-five have limiting access pieces, and it's extremely expensive. Um, in, in the conversations that we've had already on one of, one of them, you know, creating another bridge is, uh, very significant. But creating the opportunity for getting around town and to get to different services, and then also establishing our community in a way so that we don't all have to just go to that one spot. But we can also have all of these spots kind of sporadic and throughout. And so you could have your goods and services, you could also work within a close proximity to, to your home. Is what kind of that Aspire Plan drives that, is, is how do we change our mindset? How do we start to look at our community in a different way? When we create these other opportunities for roads and these connections and, and doing this master planning now, and making sure that we add more roads or we add more opportunities or options, you have options for your options on how do you want to get someplace? Maybe there's three different ways that you could get around. You could ride a bike, but it's raining, and so therefore I could, you know, take my car to this other spot. But it's not going to be as challenging to get there, because I don't have to be focused on an arterial street, which are the roads that you're having to be devoted to right now. Kelly Lane is one of those major arterials. Flugerville Parkway is a major arterial, pecan street are major arterials. But if we create those additional opportunities for getting around town, um, that's our hope. And so retrofits may be more challenging, um, but making sure that we plan for the future so that we don't box ourselves in again would also be a great opportunity with this plan.
Can this group encourage council to go to the voters about Cap Metro? Is that something that came up with the residents in the advisory committee?
So I think in, maybe it's a companion to it, is the Transit Development Plan, which is where that really focuses on bus ridership, things like that.
So that's got its own thing?
Where it's its own plan and direct survey related to, to transit options. And that was done last year?
Yeah.
We do, we do that every three years, a little bit more frequently than we do the transportation plan, because people's options change, right? And as you kind of see, maybe it takes you forty-five minutes, and you might be more inclined to take a bus than if you, as you see that kind of grow. And so I think it's important here, where it's a companion in looking at like the cross-sections that, that might accommodate a bus in the future, right? And so versus the actual mode, it's like accommodating slow modes, buses, those kinds of things in the cross-sections that are in here, versus actually the actual mode, which is where the Transit Development Plan focuses on, how do you get around, um, in a more, um, bus, train, trolley scenario?
I have a question, uh, lots of questions. The, um, so kind of back to the reason to have a golf cart, right? It's like, okay, well, I mean.
Is your wife listening right now? Like, I feel like we should call her and let her know.
She definitely wants a golf cart, too. Um, more so than I do. So I think, we all know where this is going. Um, but I, I think the, the, what we're talking about is place-making, right? And that's something that we've talked about for years. Um, and so, you know, one of the wild ideas I've proposed here is, in the trains, like, hey, how do we just connect the high schools? Because those are places, and why wouldn't you have a trolley system that can just, and also go along the parks? Because that kind of connects them all and make those the places that people go. And then obviously, like, city's growing, et cetera, you know, uh, a lot, and like, the lake is a place now. Um, Stone Hill is a place, right? There's some development going on there. So is there any consideration in the way that y'all have done this excellent work to identify what, you know, essentially intersections, but, but these are potential places that will become places either in the near term or redeveloped or whatever in the future? And the city is involved in that, literally like that, that place-making, or, or the city.
Like Downtown East?
Acquired land, Downtown East, it's a soon-to-be very important place. It is an important place now, but once it's developed, that's going to be a massive anchor. How, how, or how involved are y'all on the, you know, the place-making side of things?
So I would say, in our comp plan, we identified where those mixed-use centers would go and how we wanted to see the area develop and grow. That was kind of our visioning exercise.
Okay.
When it comes to actual acquiring the property and all of that, I think that's a different conversation. And that's, that's something like P C D C would be involved in, in efforts like that. But I think the, the comp plan is really our, our guide.
Understood.
This is not exactly what you asked, but as we were developing the trails plan, we did identify places, essentially schools, parks, grocery stores, uh, centers with old folks living at them specifically, and really tried to make an effort to make sure those were connected, at least to the system, if not to anything else.
Yeah, no, that's actually, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and on that note, if it's a possibility that the, uh, facilities could be widened such that they would accommodate a, a, you know, I mean, gosh, an electric trolley that would take senior citizens from their development to the library or to the rec center or the wherever. I mean, that is, that is a unique, uh, not only a place-making option, but also something that would, you know, stand alone and apart from many other communities. Like, that's a huge, something just like that would be a massive opportunity.
Yeah, that would be totally financially sustainable, probably, too. Um, I have another question, comment. Um, so I love that you guys did the, let's do multiple four-lanes instead of, uh, six-lane. But how is that going to be encouraged or enforced? Is that going to become part of the Uniform Development Code? Like, because I know we hear a lot when there's development around the area where there's like fifteen different jurisdictions over the road. I might be exaggerating, but not by a lot, like row lane crossing over one-thirty. And I know a lot of that is because the subdivisions only have one or two or maybe three ways out of the subdivision. So how do we, how do we get the next subdivisions not to do that anymore?
So the connectivity components is really critical, and that's what we're trying to focus on in here. The local streets, the ones that Kelly showed, that were like that kind of black color at the, one of the earlier slides. This is going to, this plan will be focused on more of the collector and arterial kind of levels, and then looking at the trails and those connections. Then there will need to be texts associated with it that helps to advocate for the local streets and the local street connections. Those are just as important as the local street, or as the arterials or collectors, and maybe more so.
Yeah.
Because the more connections that you have, the example again of downtown, those pieces, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be a specific grid, right?
Right, it doesn't have to be a grid, just.
Yeah, in your mind would be a grid. Well, it doesn't have to be that per se, but the, the other subdivision example that was provided, if there was just another outlet, then they would have had two outlets together. Now, that design is, there's a, a great place, you know, for that, those neighbors, because they, they have a quaint neighborhood and, and they're, it's a tight-knit space. So there's, there's opportunities for things like that. But then there's also the opportunities to make sure that people have the travel modes to be able to go through it. So a lot of that comes out of this plan, where we say, we want to see these different types of connections, and we'll have to talk about points and connections and, and whatever the right words are that would get there. But that'll be part of the policy that then gets put into this plan, that then we are able to celebrate inside the Unified Development Code when we do those updates.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, so this will be considered next time Uniform Development Code is updated?
Right, so this is, this is our, just like how the, the comprehensive plan helps us with conversations, it led us into this conversation about transportation. But it also talks about land use and things like that. And so we, we make adjustments based on those master plans to be able to get at what that desire is that the community's saying.
So I just, I know that that's, you know, when people come to us to oppose a new development, it's usually because of the burden it's going to place on the traffic in their neighborhood. But then we can't really do anything about whatever's coming in, in terms of like, I, I'm looking, I look at some of them and I'm like, there's going to be a bottleneck getting out of this neighborhood, but there's, I don't have the authority to say anything. I mean, I, I, I say something, but we don't have the authority to force the issue, right? And yeah, I mean, you can have cul-de-sacs all day, but if there's only one way in and out of your subdivision, people are going to be really unhappy.
Roundabouts only help for a little bit.
Well, what they're also unhappy about is when you have a through street that ends up being, you know, so many people cut through.
Right.
And then we hear about, oh, these people are going so fast, I can't even get out of my neighborhood, I can't do anything. So I, I think what I like about having more of the, the kind of the major collectors distributed is that it, it reduces that kind of, uh, informal need to, oh, I need to cut through this neighborhood. Because, well, there's another major road that's just one block over, so.
Yeah.
I, I'm not as concerned about like the neighborhood level, you know, mobility, having multiple ways in and out, you know, in four directions. But, um, but I, I do like kind of how we're doing it in the east, where we have more of those major collectors. I think that's a good idea.
I think there should be two ways, one way in, one way out, or vice versa, basically, two ways. It's just safer. Fire trucks can get in, ambulances can get in, not everybody's bottleneck, but.
And there are.
And you could do speed bumps and stuff like that along the major road, major interior road.
Or just like intentionally make it a collector instead of it being.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, on, on low-speed vehicles, so I'm looking at, you know, communities that I've heard of, you know, where it's, there, there's, the cars are only in the alleyway. And the, um, oh my goodness, Highland Park is a neighborhood that's a, a pretty good example, where the, there's alleys, but then the cars, you know, there's only street parking or things like that. Um, is there a way to incentivize from a, from a roadway or a park system approach, that type of, uh, development? Either, either like, you know, specifically a golf cart-style community, or, um, like in your roads here, uh, the, like a minor collector, or even, even on your local, to make that, um, a lower-speed car? Where you're like, where, you know, where, where cars are, um, just restricted by the, um, you know, it's a restricted speed just based on the, the utility of the space, either sightlines or turns and things like that. Is there a way to encourage that? Or, or design the, um, the master plan and, and aspire plan and all those other things? Or even policy that would effectively make that the way things get done?
So if I, if I understand you correctly, you're talking about having kind of a context-sensitive design, so that if a group wants to build it to a smaller lane width or something like that, that creates slower speeds? Is that?
Correct, correct. Where, where, so like, like as an example, in Falcon Point, um, there are, there's a number of people that have golf carts, right? But it's not nearly as pervasive as like you would expect. And I think part of that has to do like with the, with Falcon Point Boulevard, which is a pretty fast local road. I mean, it's, it's, I think posted thirty, but people can absolutely do forty-five without any issue. And so, you know, that's a, that's a challenging cross because of where it is. So I'm not suggesting redesigning that, but if, if another neighborhood was going to come in that was going to offer similar services, is there a way to effectively set the guidelines such that, um, you know, a, a forty-foot-wide, un-speed bumped, nice looping street wouldn't allow for fifty miles an hour, even if it was posted at thirty?
Yep, so I would say that the cross-sections themselves is what probably gets at some of that. So the wider that the street is, the perception is going to be, I can move.
Yeah.
Right? And so we could sign a wise lane at twenty-five miles an hour, nobody would ever drive that.
Tenth Street.
Um, that's what, because it's a, is a wide street, there's not any physical obstructions there. You don't see buildings up there, you don't see any trees or anything like that. The closest thing that you see is a light pole and phone fields in a lot of those situations. So I think that's where some of these designs inside of the cross-sections help us. Where we're, we're talking about looking at, like, the collectors. Maybe it's not four lanes or six lanes, you know, six-lane arterial streets, but instead it's looking at the four lanes. And then what does the pavement look like? That may help us get at more of a, it feels more comfortable to drive forty miles an hour on a collector street or, you know, uh, slower speed inside of a, a local street, because the pavement isn't so wide. You go in onto Kingston Lacy near Heatherwild, and it's like ninety feet of right-of-way. Well, at the time, that's what the requirement was, was that they needed to have that type of a roadway connection. And they saw merit to doing it, and it was, it was correct. It, it was built accurately. There's a lot of right-of-way, and it's a lot of pavement that you've seen.
Right.
And so people, you know, can park on both sides, and you can have two lanes going through there easily. But it, it's tweaking the cross-sections, I think, is what gets at the things that you're talking about. It also is just the context of where the buildings are placed and how we approach that, too. So through our design codes, that'll help with that.
I like if you look, um, page nine, slide eighteen, the two view options, the one with a bunch of trees, I would feel less inclined to speed through than the one with nothing on either side. And so some of it is the placemaking of the roads, some of it is the width of the lanes. There's some tools you can use to try and slow people down, especially with the width of lanes and things like that. But from a broad policy, a lot of it does go into the cross-section and how we lay them out, just not making it feel like a place I need to go fifty miles an hour.
But I think statements that I'm hearing, uh, is that there's interest in having slower speeds or looking at finding ways inside of the plan, if there's ways that we can address slowing the speed, that is a desire.
And so I guess from a, like, I like race cars, so let's, let's, I want to make that on the record.
Don't slow me down.
Don't slow me down, but I guess what I mean is the, uh.
Slow, but they keep us moving.
The, the, well, I've talked oftentimes about roundabouts here. I think roundabouts, uh, and specifically, I can think of a couple, like in Breckenridge, Colorado, there's a two-lane roundabout that is always moving. And it's one of, like, the first time I drove there, I was just like, oh, wow, that was such a pleasant two-hour drive, because I didn't have to come to a dead stop for twenty minutes to cycle through this really, really busy intersection. two-hour drive because I didn't have to come to a dead stop for twenty minutes to cycle through this really, really busy intersection. And I know that's like a very, very challenging, complex design and there's expenses and things like that and so forth. But Jeremy, to kind of speak to what you mentioned, I think the thing that's interesting to me is that within, say, a mile or even a half a mile, it would make a lot of sense that, that a low-speed vehicle makes, you know, like a bike, golf cart, whatever, makes a lot of sense because, you know, kids would use it, adults, senior citizens, et cetera, maybe even up to a mile. That would be the twenty-five miles an hour or less. You know, because I mean, there's kids that have like a little electric dirt bikes now and, and, and bird scooters and, you know, those kinds of things, like those are still low-speed vehicles that extend your range and capacity. But, you know, on a, on a scooter, those absolutely shouldn't be on Kelly Lane. You know, like, I don't want that to risk and have to deal with all that. But, but it could be something that kids could use to get to wherever they're going, store, school, whatever. Anyway, so I guess, yes, slower, shorter. Thank you.
So any feedback that you all continue, you know, as you kind of digest some of this, as you look at some of those slides? And this is the, we wanted to come forward and, and give you the opportunity to be able to hear, you know, this is the steps that we're taking and, and feedback that's been received and it's been combined into the plans and, and the images that you see now. If there are additional thoughts that you have, send them our way, please. Because it, it is important for us to make sure that we, we get this right. And we're talking about some adjustments here. You know, and this is, we're talking about combining things that typically have been separated and we're trying to make sure that it's a, a combined approach. So.
I had a question. I just wanted to make sure I understood. So the current trails are going to get collector trails to where people can actually go somewhere like a HEB or Stone Hill or Emergency Center or the school. So that's like your first go or are we just going to like throw everything and then start and then stop? I guess is my question.
One of the things that we heard from the, the committee, and I think it was also in the survey, was that people wanted to be able to get to those different places. And so that's what's shown inside of this trails plan is to how, how could you get to those different locations and making sure that we have a plan that shows that connection so that when something comes up? This helps to formulate what our capital improvement plans are until when they come forward once a year to say, you know, here's kind of our list and you can look at this and say, oh yeah, that was that one critical connection that we saw, you know, that was inside of this plan. Having those things listed inside of these plans is really important so that we can, we can go back to it and say, this is what the community wanted. So
Like a goal date of how they're going to be done? That's my other, yeah.
And so the, the priorities haven't specifically been listed in here of like, this is the first trail that will be connected. But instead it's, it's being reflected right at this point. I think in later, we're talking a little more on priorities.
Kind of prioritizing them. And some of them, like if it's along a private development, it depends on the developer
Correct.
developing. But in terms of what the city controls, we're working on prioritizing that for the plan.
Yeah. I mean, I'm going to assume because there are going to be new development coming in. And of course, now you're going to update the, not the L U Vs, but basically how much they're going to charge. You can ask them at that time and kind of like incentivize them as, as we said, or as we talked about, to connect to a trail, to get us to an emergency center, to get us to HEB, to get us to Stone Hill, et cetera, et cetera. Is that in the game plan?
Yeah. Yes. I think that I think one of the challenges that we have is putting indexes of a, a trail to the commercial development. But as roads come in, if that reflects infrastructure that's required by our master plans, then that's when those different elements would be constructed. Once, once, you know, if this gets adopted and once that gets rolled into the design.
And then is the survey still out there? Do, do people know there's a survey out there? I mean, forty-five hundred people said yes, but we have, I think, a bit more in Flugerville that live here. And only three hundred and fifty actually submitted the survey. Is it still out there?
It was advertised to close on the fifteenth of November. We didn't actually close it and we have been noticing a couple of people are still finding it and accessing it. Um, we haven't advertised that it's still open, but we're not actively looking to close it yet.
Okay. Is there like a close date?
It was.
It was. Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we, we've had it open and we were pushing it out through the, you may have seen the stickers that are thrown throughout. We also put it out on the social medias where a lot of people
I think you gave me a business card. I gave it to everybody that I knew in Flugerville. I don't know that many people in Flugerville, but yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm so sorry, I may interrupt you. On the feedback from that, like on the people who've submitted, was there kind of a, a, an aggregation towards the main four the seven biggest projects? Or is it, is it just a wide distribution of comments?
It's pretty wide. A lot of them are very recent issues too, like the new light by the new HEB got a lot of comments because it's brand new and people aren't used to it. And so there's a little bit of working on weighing things on recency bias versus true community interest. But I would say it's fairly widespread.
People really like to talk about that light.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think that wraps up item four A on the discussed only part of the agenda. So we can move on to section five, which is discuss and consider. So we'll hear from Kristen on item five A, RES twelve eighty-three, discuss and consider recommending approval of the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAEPER for Program Year 2023.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. So tonight we're going to go over the CAEPER or the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, which is like the report card for our CDBG grant that the city administers. Each year we report annually on our accomplishments and the progress towards reaching those consolidated plan goals. It is submitted annually each year, approximately ninety days after the close of the previous plan year. Plan years run from October one to September thirtieth of the next year. So in PY twenty-three, which would have been October of twenty-three to September of twenty-four, the city has started, city staff has started progress towards completing the design for Parkway Drive. And a contractor for the streetlight program has been selected. That project has since started after the current program year started in October. For the programs, the youth and senior scholarships, we had approximately forty-eight youths sign up and receive the scholarship. And for about three thousand dollars spent towards that project. And then workforce solution provided funded for six residents to attend workforce training as well as meet transportation needs to get there. And then so for total for the whole year, a little more than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars was expended to help our low mod residents in this, within the city of Flugerville. Tonight, we're looking for a recommendation to City Council for approval of this. Report card, for lack of a better term. And then next week it will go to City Council for approval. And then from there it will be submitted to HUD for them to review. And then we start the next year, starting in January, February, city staff will start planning for our projects for PY twenty-five, as well as working towards completion of those projects that were identified for PY twenty-four, which would be the completion of the design for Parkway, to hopefully roll into the construction of Parkway Drive, complete that streetlight project. And then as well as administer the workforce solutions and youth scholar, salute, youth and senior scholarship program for our tenth year.
Any questions or discussion on this one?
Move to approve second.
Okay, a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Yeah, just, I guess before we, before we finish up, it's the last meeting of the year. So I know we have a few that are terms expiring. Hopefully we'll see them next year, but I understand at least, at least one of us will be leaving. So wanted to thank you all for, for your service and everything. And yeah, Happy New Year, I guess, everybody. I'm adjourned the meeting at eight o'clock.